Overview and scrutiny management board. My name is councillor Adam Stokes and I'm the chairman of this board and councillor Tom Smith, the vice chairman of the board, is also in attendance. Can I remind you that the audio visual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcasted live via the county council's website? And all your comments remain accessible online as the meeting recording remains on the website. And with this in mind, I'd like to welcome members of the public and press watching this live. I'd like to welcome the executive councils and executive support councillors attending our meeting today, and I'd also like to welcome the members of the corporate leadership team who are present today as well. Thank you. I'd like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the doors behind you and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We will then need to wait for further instructions. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of this meeting? Also, when invited to speak, can you please ensure that you switch on your microphone? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online won't be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphones to be heard, and also the hearing loop is now activated. Requests to speak will be collated by the vice chairman. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and the vice chairman will make a note? We'll try to ensure everyone has the opportunity to ask questions and make contributions. I would appreciate contributions to be succinct and concise and ask that you indicate early when you wish to speak. We will now move on to the formal agenda. So, item one, apologies for absent and replacement members. Emily, please.
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies from councillor Hall, councillor Macy, councillor Lee, Paul Brewster, Emile Van der Zee, and also just to note apologies from Debbie Barnes, chief executive.
That's great, thank you. We'll now move on to item two, declarations of members' interests. Members of board are reminded that they only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on their DPI interest form. So, do any members wish to declare an interest? No, thank you. So, we'll now move on to item three, which is the minutes of the meeting held on the 30th of January. And this is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting of the board on the 30th of January as a correct record. And these can be found on pages seven to 14 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposal for these, please? Councillor Kendrick and second, councillor Smith, all those in favour, please? Thank you. Any against, any abstentions? One abstention. That is carried, thank you. So, item four, announcements by the chairman, executive councils and chief officers. I have no announcements to make today, and to ensure efficient use of our time, report introductions will be limited to a maximum of five minutes. Five minutes, allowing ample time for discussion and consideration of all agenda items. Are there any executive councillor announcements? I don't think so. And any chief officer announcements? No, there aren't any, thank you. So, item five, consideration of call-ins. Emily, are there any call-ins to consider, please?
No, none received, chairman.
Thank you. Item six, consideration of councillor calls for action. Emily, have you received any of those, please?
No, none received.
Thank you. So, we'll now move on swiftly to item seven, which is the Revenue Budget Monitoring Report 2425, quarter three. And this is a pre-decision scrutiny report and can be found on pages 15 to 46 of the agenda pack. The report provides an update on the capital investment 2425 financial year, including progress on key investment schemes and updates to the capital programme. It reflects external funding and rephrasing adjustments made in quarter three as outlined in appendix B. And the report also details ongoing improvements in capital reporting to enhance transparency in alignment with the council's 10-year capital programme. And I do think I've gone too far ahead. So, we'll go back, we'll go back to, yes, yes. So, we'll go back to the Revenue Budget Monitoring Report, sorry. So, this can be found on pages 15 to 46, and this provides an update on the revenue spending for 2425. See, as an accountant, I knew I was wrong, so that's why I just stopped and carried on. So, so revenue spending for 2425 financial year up to 31st of December, highlighting a forecasted general fund overspend of 1.9 million. Though the position has improved throughout the year, the executive is due to consider the report for noting at its meeting on the 4th of March. So, our actions are consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the executive set out on page 18, and agree that our comments be passed to the executive in relation to this item. So, the report will be presented by Michelle Grady, assistance director of finance. Over to you, Michelle. And this is the Capital Budget Monitoring Report. Thank you.
So, we're just looking at the revenue monitoring report as the first report. So, as chairman said, we're reviewing quarter three of the revenue position for the council. In quarter two, we reported an expected overspend on our service budgets of 4 million. So, we do have an improving position. So, whilst it's still overspending, forecasting an overspend, it's an improving position of 1.9 million. The preacher, pressures, I'm sorry. This is, we'll set the tone, I think, chairman. So, pressures reported in previous reports continue to feature, including areas such as education, transport, waste disposal and specialist social care placements as creating pressures on our budgets for the current year. There are improvements on the forecasts for the service lines in most areas, but the largest change from quarter two is in other budgets, which relates to the expo dividend that we get, which was 700k over what we planned for, and also the small saving on what we planned for for pay inflation for the year. The appendices that start on table, start at page 29, give more detail of the variances reported, and also provide some updates of the use of reserves and development fund initiatives. Whilst we are forecasting an overspend, it's worth noting that we do have a contingency of 7.4 million, which should be sufficient to manage the service pressures that we're seeing in year. So, we're not expecting to draw down any reserve that we hadn't planned to. It's probably also worth noting in the report that the overspend position on the high needs block of the dedicated schools grant is currently 8.3 million, which is a growth from 4.6 million that was reported in quarter two. And appendix B gives some update on the planned use of earmarked reserves and specific use of the development fund. So, I'm just happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that, Michelle. Do we have any questions? And councillor Key, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mine isn't a question. I'm not an expert on all this, as you probably know, but I just think it's a credit to us that we're managing to keep within our budget like this when so many other councils aren't. And it's such a shame if we're penalised in the future because we have done. And that's just somebody off the street saying that, really. I mean, none of us are experts on this, but I just think, you know, credit to us for doing it. And it's really sad when other councils who haven't looked after their money so well are getting help that we're not. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions? Councillor Brockway, please.
Thank you very much, chairman. I've got a couple of questions, if I may. One is, on page 41, you give a clear layout of the earmarked reserves, and above it is the title of general fund. Could I just be clear about our total reserves, please? I can see the financial volatility reserve is 46 million, and development funds, et cetera. But is financial volatility reserve part of the general fund? What are our total reserves, including earmarks? And if the figure isn't easily available, if you could just give me a rough idea, that would be great. Thank you.
So, the appendix B table sets out our earmarked reserves and the general fund reserve. So, there are, there are two. So, general fund reserve is effectively our pot of absolute last, dire straits kind of territory. And I think, I think Andrew and I can both say, we've never had to touch that reserve the whole time that we've been responsible for that. And that currently stands at 19.4 million. And there is a calculation that we have a policy of keeping that at two and a half, between two and a half and three and a half percent of our net spend budget. So, we maintain a general reserve, and it is reserve of last resort. The earmarked reserves are usually for more specific purposes, and the total, as you can see from that table...
It's 46, yeah.
Yeah, so the total earmarked reserves are 69 million forecast for the end of 24/5, of which the 46 is part of that. So, that's part of that total. We also have revenue grant reserves, so where we've been given grants for specific purposes, such as public health grant, that's got specific requirements around it that hasn't been utilised yet. And they total 67 million in that, that total there. And schools balances are also recorded in there as well. So, the different types of reserves, the different purposes, but the volatility reserve is all part of that total.
Thank you very much. May I ask a second? Thank you, chairman. Thank you ever so much for that. I also wanted to ask a question on behalf of residents, actually, a single conversation with some older residents who are concerned that because of the very volatile situation in America and Russia and Ukraine, and all these other countries, I was asked quite specifically, when we make a decision in this council about allocation of finances to specific things, and normally when a council passes a decision, you have to wait a certain time before changing your mind, they wanted to know what actually happens in a situation where we need to move our funds rapidly elsewhere. I know about environment, you've got, I think it's 1.36 here, you've got explanation about, but that's normal budget environments on a day-to-day basis. They were asking me, what is the situation where suddenly we have to say, no, we're not spending on those things we've approved, we've got to move it here, here and here all of a sudden? What facility does the council have to achieve that, please? So, this is actually a residence question.
Boss doesn't think I can answer this one, so we'll see. So, I think there's a couple of things to reflect on here. So, we have contingency reserves to deal with volatility or unexpected events, and usually the use of those are delegated to the section 151, if they're in conjunction with the portfolio for finance, which is the leader of the council. In an emergency situation, we have joint working, and if it's a national issue, that does usually come with funding. So, during Covid, we were expected to react very quickly, obviously undertake some functions that we hadn't undertaken before, and that was supported by funding from government to do that. If it's a local emergency, so we have a response scenario going on, you understand with the recent flood stuff, we can react quickly. The government does run a bellwinds scheme, they call it. So, if we have over a million pounds of additional cost, which is a percentage of our spend, we can claim that back through an emergency procedure through government. I think if we have some issues like what the Americans are doing or Russians, I think that will probably be a wider scope. But obviously, clearly, we still have statutory functions we've got to fulfil. So, we can't just stop social work, we can't just stop, you know, other things that we do because we do have statutory responsibilities. But obviously, like Covid was a good example where some of those things were dialled up and down based on the conditions at the time. I don't know, Andrew, if you want to add anything to that.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, chairman. Excuse me. Thank you, chairman. I shall hopefully be brief because there are a number of questions, but they aren't lengthy, chairman. Given the national issues with DSG, which is dedicated schools grant, do officers believe that in the next two, three years, we will be needing to use the safety valve that is in operation for at least another two years, as far as I'm aware? Are there any mitigation measures to avoid continual overspends on EH CNAs? And given the health visitor recruitment level in the council has, for as long as I've been a councillor, been at a similar level, has some consideration been given for keeping it at that level? What is the risk to service provision versus financial saving? Given the increased number in working age adults needing mental health support, et cetera, what can we do, if anything, to mitigate this? Because it seems the demand levels for this are becoming an increasing risk due to the stringent legislative framework that LCC must operate in with regards to this service area. And finally, chairman, have the risks of increasing numbers of EHCPs been factored into, given the drive for more SEND children to go into mainstream schools, to avoid being in SEND schools, given the cost implications? And also, there's been a number of studies that basically say that the outcomes that they receive are not, they're not getting better outcomes, basically. And I'm particularly mindful of this, chairman, because there is the consultation that's just finished on having units in certain primary schools, and one's in my own division in Caister. So, it'd be very helpful to have an answer to that question if one's available. Thank you, chairman.
I can start to try and answer some of those. Other people might have to come in on some of that stuff. And I think Kiera's got somebody on screen.
Heather, did you want to come in on that, please?
Hi there, yes. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Okay, lovely. So, thank you councillor Smith. A few of those questions directed towards the schools and the children services area, so I'll, I'll come through. In terms of the DSG and the two to three years question around whether we'd need to use the safety valve, the safety valve is a national scheme, and it's dictated by the government in terms of the levels of your overspend. We're not currently projecting to be near levels of overspend where we're expecting to use the safety valve, although, as you can see in the report, we are seeing sustained and increased pressure on the DSG, which has been seen nationally. And we've talked many times about the fact that we are one of the few councils that hasn't overspent on the high needs block. And I think the leader said at the full council meeting on Friday that that is definitely the direction of travel for us. Unfortunately, demand is outstripping the funding available. And I'll talk a little bit about the mitigations through the other questions. In terms of the EH CNA, which is Education Health and Care Needs Assessment, we have been doing work on that, and actually, we've seen a reduction in the overspend in that service. And a lot of that overspend is in relation to educational psychology assessments, which are required for our EH CNA assessments. And we're doing a lot of work there to look at how we can be innovative in the way that we do those needs assessments, how we can use the teams we've got in our specialist teacher teams to reduce the pressure on educational psychologists. But again, that's a statutory duty that's placed on us, and it's part of the SEND code of practice that we undertake it. But we are seeing some progress in those overspends with the mitigations that we've put in place. I'll nip to the EHCPs first and then come back to health visiting. So, the EHCP is a big pressure on us, it's a big pressure nationally. There is an awful lot of work going on nationally. I think councillors will be aware that I've been appointed as one of the expert advisers on a group that's looking at how we can support a more inclusive education system where children don't have to travel to different schools to get expertise and to get specialist provision, where they can have that wrapped around the school that's in their community, which is part of the work we're doing around having units in primary schools that are resource units, they're not units for children to sit in, they're resource units where they will have expertise employed through the school within those units that can support those children to have their needs met in mainstream schools. As councillor Smith says, we know that the evidence is telling us that children get better outcomes in that way, where we can possibly maintain them in mainstream schools. In relation to health visiting, I think we've had a lot of considerations about health visiting, but we are not yet performing at the level we would want to perform at in terms of making sure we deliver the full healthy child programme. So, at this point, what we're looking at is we've developed a really effective skills mix in that area, so using some of that funding that could have been used for health visitors to have health visitor assistants, people who work alongside the health visitors, looking at running clinics in our children's centres, so that families find it easier to get to those and to meet those. But we need to still continue to drive to meet the needs of all of our families and to increase the contacts that we have. It's worth noting as well that that is from one of those public health grants rather than from general funds, and it's ring fenced for that use. And so, we're really looking to continue to develop the effectiveness of that. I would say we have seen an increase in health visitor recruitment in the last 18 months, and we are starting to get some traction with making sure that we are fully staffed in that area. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Martin, do you want to come in on that?
Yeah, if I could pick up the question about adult mental health. So, really, you've rightly identified that there's a significant pressure in the mental health area. Indeed, it's probably fair to say that working age mental health is the biggest pressure that we have in the whole of the adult social care area at the moment. Really, that's down to three things. The first is there are an ever-increasing number of young people who've been through the HCP process, who are reaching adulthood, and then a small proportion of them, but it's an increasing absolute number, are coming into the adult mental health system. The second thing we're finding is that the NHS has nationally very deliberately been implementing what they're calling the mental health investment standard. So, they are significantly increasing the amount of spend on healthcare, mental health spend. One of the consequences of that is that they're finding more people and treating more people, and those people then are having wider care needs and coming into the social care system. And the third driver has been, absolutely brightly, a shift from institutional care for people with mental health issues so that people live in the community. But one of the consequences of that is that people who are in institutional care tend to be funded and entirely supported by the NHS. When they're in the community, they are a joint responsibility of local government and the NHS. So, that causes the pressure for us. We're seeking to address that in three ways. We're working extensively with Heather and her teams on preparation for adulthood, so that we are able to identify young people from the age of 14 or 15 who are likely to be entering the adult social care system, and making sure that we've got a good preparation so that they are as prepared as they possibly can be for adulthood, for the difference in the legislation and the systems, and that we have, therefore, they're able, there's least disconnect, the avoidance of cliff edge, and cliff edges tend to cause difficulty for people and cause greater costs. That's the first area. The second area is we're working very closely with the NHS, particularly around what's called section 117 payments. So, section 117 of the Mental Health Act says someone who's been detained under the Mental Health Act, when they are then released, their care and treatment must be provided for free. And of course, adult social care is normally a means tested, charged for service. So, individuals detained under the Mental Health Act, we can't charge them. And it says that the local authority and the NHS have a joint responsibility to deliver that care. We are working with our NHS colleagues to make sure we're drawing the line in the right place, and therefore, we are funding what we should be and not what we shouldn't be. And then the third area is we are increasingly looking at issues of prevention to see what can we do either to avoid people having mental health issues in the first place, or catching them at an early stage from a social care perspective, so that they, they don't deteriorate further, and therefore, are able to reduce the cost of their care.
That's great, thank you. Do we have any further? Councillor Carrington, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm still slightly recovering from the blizzard of acronyms in councillor Smith's incredibly well-informed question. So, I wonder if you could go back to our colleague online. I just really wanted some further clarification and reassurance about SEND provision. I'm aware that we are sort of coming to the end of a very major capital programme, and of course, we've just finished a consultation on the future of that service. I think about a week ago, it might be a day or two out. And when we had our budget meeting, we voted some extra money for that. So, could I have some reassurance that whilst there are pressures, and we've heard about these from our colleague, we are in a situation where delivery to children on the ground, which is what really matters for the coming financial year, will be assured? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you. Do you want to pick that up? Heather, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, councillor. In terms of the delivery on the ground, you know, I think it is a really challenging time for SEND, and I think it's fair that we acknowledge that for the, for those families who are awaiting places. I think that part of the issue is we don't have enough special school places to meet demand, and the capital programme has addressed that in part, and the units will address that further. And we've also worked on our commissioning approaches to address that even further. The delivery of SEND on the ground is a complex kind of matrix of delivery. So, you've got school delivery, you've got health delivery, and you've also got the delivery of places and EHCPs, which are Education Health and Care Plans through the council. So, I think the vast majority of children in Lincolnshire are having their needs met. We've always been held in very high regard in the way in which we do that, and our parent care forum gives us excellent feedback from children and families. What I will say is we do have children awaiting special school places, and we're working really hard to get those places available for the children as soon as we possibly can be. But that doesn't mean there aren't families who are waiting for us to be able to do that. We have just finished a SEND area inspection, which is an inspection of the ICB, which is the Integrated Care Board, and the local authority, and will reflect on that. And, you know, I think some of the challenges we've got around waiting times for health treatments that SEND families are waiting for, some of the challenges are around EHCPs and making sure we get the quality of those right. We maintain 8,000 EHCPs, and they all have to be reviewed annually, and we're working on that. But what I can assure you is that we have a comprehensive programme in place, we're performing comparatively well, and we continue to put children and families at the heart of our work as we do that and do engage with them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That clarifies things very greatly. Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Do we have any further questions on this report? No, I'll tell you the no, as I don't see any hands showing. So, I will move from the chair that the board supports the recommendations to the executive as detailed on page 18 of the report, and ask that our comments that have been captured by the scrutiny officer be shared with the executive for its consideration. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Key, all those in favour, please? That's unanimous, thank you. We'll now move on to item eight, and this is actually the Capital Budget Monitoring Report. So, this is a pre-decision scrutiny report, and this can be found on pages 47 to 74 of the agenda pack. And the report provides an update on the capital investment for 2425 financial year, including progress on key investment schemes and updates to the capital programme. It reflects external funding and rephasing adjustments made in quarter three as outlined in appendix B. And the report also details improvements in the capital reporting to enhance transparency in alignment with the council's 10-year capital programme. And the executive is due to consider the report for noting at its meeting on the 4th of March. So, our actions are that we consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations as set out on page 49, and agree that our comments be passed to the executive in relation to this item. Again, this report will be presented by Michelle Grady, assistance director for finance. So, over to you, Michelle. This time it is the capital.
Thank you very much. So, this time I will comment on the capital monitoring for quarter three. So, table two on page 59 sets out a summary of the position for our capital programme. We have a gross capital programme of 221 million for the current year. And you'll see from that summary table that we have additional forecast spend on this of 32 million, which is funded by external funding. So, we're getting grant funding in for that, and that mainly reflects the additional devolution money that was given to us to build into our programme. So, we have a net variance of just under 1.7 million, so a small net underspend on the programme at the moment. I think the key variations are mainly on some of the highway schemes. So, we've got a small overspend on highways asset protection, where we generally overprogram to ensure that we fully deliver the schemes of work, and a couple of variations on some of the major schemes that primarily relate to timing and are reflected in the capital programme that was approved by council last week. So, happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions on this report? Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, chairman. Could officers elaborate on the nature, excuse me, of the technical issues of the Gruntham Southern Relief Road, and when these will likely be resolved?
Andy, over to you, please.
I presume Michelle doesn't want to answer this question. Yeah. As was reported in the press about a month ago now, councillor Davis gave a press statement to identify that there'd been some matters in respect of the design of the scheme, which then resulted in delays of being able to actually carry out the detail of the next stage of the construction on site. As indicated by councillor Davis, all parties are working together to actually progress matters with the expectation of the next stage of works will be fulfilled from the summer onwards, overall resulting in approximately an overall delay of about a year. As councillor Davis made clear in that, in the context of our expectation as the client, we will obviously be holding all parties to account in the context of making sure that those monies are recovered in the context of the challenges that we've had with bringing the scheme forward. I think it is a reflection on a major highway civil engineering scheme. There are always unknowns and uncertainties that come out, not just within Lincolnshire, across the whole sector, which tests the patience of all parties involved.
Thank you. Are there any? Councillor Kendrick, and then councillor Key.
Thank you, chairman. I was just looking at the North Hican Relief Road, and I see there's obviously an item in the budget. If I read it correctly, it's 9.3 million. Obviously, I assume that's dependent on whether or not we get the funding through government, which is currently in abeyance at the moment. What happens to that fund? Does it get transferred elsewhere? Should we not get the funding from government?
So, we are currently spending government money, whether they are approving it or not. So, I think that's probably the long and short of that. So, the scheme is progressing. We are making claims to DFT, and they are funding those claims. So, and they have no recourse on getting that money back. I think Andy, Andy's nodding his head, yeah. So, the scheme's progressing. Clearly, we're still awaiting final confirmation around the 110 million that's coming.
Clearly, we're still awaiting final confirmation around the 110 million that's contributing towards that scheme, but the DFT is still funding progress on that scheme, and it's continuing as planned.
Thanks very much. That's interesting.
Thank you for that. councillor Key, please.
I was also going to ask about the North Hican Relief Road, so I think it's been answered other than have we heard any more? That was going to be my extra point.
Andy, over to you, please.
So the programme in relation to the delivery of the scheme is currently on track from the context of the activities that we're taking through. We're currently in negotiation with DFT about the timing of the public inquiry. That public inquiry is a necessary part of the process as a result of the objections that have been received to the compulsory purchase orders and side road orders. That is scheduled and is expected to take place late April into May. That is a statutory commitment in terms of the timelines that DFT are supposed to work to. On the result of that inquiry, the secretary of state will then make a determination of whether those matters are being addressed. That will enable us to finalise the final business case to DFT, hopefully in the autumn, which would be the last bit of the paperwork that we are responsible for, which should then result in the formal sign-off of the 110 million pound. I think the point that councillor Kendrick alluded to, it would be nice if in the meantime the government were giving confidence that that money still existed. The process we are working through is illegitimate, and it's the type of process we've worked through for other schemes such as the Lincoln East and bypass. At that stage, there was no doubt about whether the pot of money's still been available, albeit that that had resulted in a reduction in a pot at an earlier stage. We knew what the capital was that was earmarked to come our way.
Thank you for that. councillor Carrington, please.
Yes, thank you. I think we all have a great interest in this road, which is of crucial importance. It actually has a very big impact in my division. But actually, it has an enormous importance for the whole of our county and particularly the bits around the city of Lincoln. I'd just like to congratulate officers on the work that is being done. It is very unfortunate that we are having to spend money not knowing whether we will get the 110 million, which has now been in the government books for at least four years, I think I'm right in saying. However, if we hadn't gone on with the spending that we are undertaking, and this goes back to councillor Kendrick's question, we would not have been in a position, as and when the government will hopefully say yes, to deliver, because all those processes that Andy has just described wouldn't have been done. So my congratulations, and I'm sure those of our residents, to the team for keeping this going, and to this council for keeping this going, and we do hope we will hear a positive answer from central government very soon.
Thank you for that, councillor Carrington. Yeah, I think the whole committee agrees with those comments, and it would be nice if the government did actually give us a nod either way at this stage. But then what do we? Well, yes, but you know, at the moment, you never know with this government, do you? Do we have any further? councillor Key, please.
Yes, thank you. I always ask about this because I come under a lot of pressure about this in Heckington, and that's the repairs to Heckington Windmill. Where do the windmill repairs come under capital? Are they in the capital budget, and which section would there be in the windmills? That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Andrew, please.
Yeah, I'll take that one. I think anything like that from a repairs basis would come in under the property repairs and maintenance budget, of which there's an annual block budget process for each year. But obviously, the usage of that is subject to prioritisation, et cetera, et cetera. And I know there's an ongoing discussion process that councillor Hill might want to come in on.
councillor Hill.
Yes, windmills are a constant cause for enjoyment, should I say. Actually, by coincidence, I was at, had a meeting about Alford Windmill yesterday. And I think the real issue is that, yes, it comes out of resources, but we have, we could spend easily 10 million pounds on windmills. So I think the truth of the matter is we have invested a lot into Heckington and been very supportive, as indeed we have with the other windmills. So we do intend to get the repairs done, and I do understand that certainly the issue with Heckington, they are looking at what can be done at an interim, because there's a meeting later today to discuss it. But if I'm going to say that we're committing to repairing all the windmills in the Lincolnshire council area, we are, but the time scale might be longer than some people would like.
Thank you for that. Do we have any further comments or questions? No. So I will move from the chair that the board supports the recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 49 of the report, and ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive for its consideration. Do I have a second, please? councillor Smith, all those in favour, please? That is unanimous, thank you. So we'll now move on to item nine, which is the corporate plan success framework 2425 quarter three. And this is a pre-decision scrutiny report, and this can be found on pages 75 to 130 of the agenda pack. And the report presents no view of performance against the corporate plan as at the 31st of December 2024. The executive is due to consider the report for noting at its meeting on the 4th of March 2025, and our actions are we consider the report and determine whether we support the recommendations to the executive as set out on page 77, and agree that our comments be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. This report will be presented by Carolyn Jackson, head of corporate performance. Over to you, please.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, so a really strong report, I think that's the first thing to say. Really good performance across a majority of the areas. In terms of this report, there are 36 activities that we can report on, so these are the key things that underpin the delivery of the corporate plan. We have no activities red-rated within this report, and 89% of those are actually progressing as planned. We do have four activities that are amber rated. Again, you'll be familiar with some of these. The first one is around the development of extra care and community-supported living accommodation strategy. Again, work is still ongoing, we're just not quite in the timeline we originally anticipated when we set this activity, but work is progressing in terms of that strategy. In terms of the activity relating to the Greater Lincolnshire Combined County Authority, again, this actually comes as two activities because it's reported in two different places within the plan. Again, I think we're all familiar with the fact that this is rated amber was because of the general election that then delayed some of the original time scales, but as we know, I think we're all familiar with the progress on that. The final activity is newly reported in quarter three, and this is regarding the delivery of the reduction in the size of the council's property estate. Again, business case work is developing and progressing, but not at the speed that was originally anticipated. There is a lot of work that's commenced since this report, so from January, around the service asset management plan, which will provide those strategic requirements on our property estate going forward. So that's a newly reported activity. In terms of the key performance indicators, again, a really positive picture. 86% of these are either exceeding or achieving their target. The seven that are exceeding are the same measures that were in quarters one and two, so I won't go over those. But we have 12 that are achieving their ambitions, so really positive performance picture. In terms of the three measures that aren't achieving their target, two of those are in waste. Again, we're familiar with those, and there's a full narrative around the waste hierarchy. I think it is worth countering those with. We have really positive performance around our household waste to landfill, which is exceeding its target, and our household waste collection, which is achieving its target. And then the third measure that's not achieving, again, is one we're familiar with, which is around the percentage of section 19 flood investigation completed within six months of starting. Again, whilst we haven't achieved the target in quarter three, we do expect positive performance as we are expecting the work around Storm Hank and Babette to be completed by the end of this year. Obviously, this is all subject to no further significant flooding incidents. And just to point out that we did have a measure in the quarter two report that was underperforming, which is our rate of children in care, that is now reported as within target for this report. So again, a positive picture that that measure has now come back into line. We have included a small number of contextual measures for information to show, again, that we've got positive performance, particularly around visitors to our heritage attractions and those using the visit Lincolnshire website. Again, a really positive quarter three position, a really busy period over Christmas that has really contributed to that, and we've seen a 33% increase in traffic on the website over the last 12 months. The overall highways service combined measure, again, one I've reported previously, again, continues to remain very good, which again means broadly speaking that all of our partners are working on track, and where they're not, there are improvement plans. So again, a really strong measure. And then finally, the number of tenants in economic development portfolios, so those with a high occupancy rate, really positive at 93%, which is consistent with quarter two. So again, continuing to maintain that high level. I'll hand over for any questions.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions? councillor Brockway, please.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you've raised the recycling. I'm an absolute passionate recycler, and I've had some interesting experience actually over the last year. I've been clearing out the very full house of a deceased relative, and so doing the dump run is almost, you know, become like going to the seaside at the weekend. We're sort of trotting down there every week. And one of the things I found at Northern Terrace is the very, very high quality of service that I've received as a resident. And I want to raise this because I'm not sure what else they could do, but I think there's a lot more that residents could do. So when you get there, some member of staff greets you. They ask what you've got, they tell you which bins to go to. When you get to the bins, they make sure that they can help you, they lift things for you, they move things for you, and they direct you to the appropriate place to separate your waste out. I mean, they even have somebody there to make sure that cars move forward fairly at busy times. They do absolutely everything that they can, and they're very nice about it. So they're very much supporting residents in their attempts to recycle. But the big problem that I've noticed when I've been there so frequently is the huge amount of very, very usable stuff that people are putting in the bins. Frankly, it's heartbreaking. Some of the stuff, you know, high-quality children's toys that are perfectly fine and could have been given to another child. Furniture, better quality than stuff in my house, frankly. You know, you're standing there thinking, well, I'd like to take that. But the truth is that the residents are putting things in the dump, into the skips, really unnecessary. To me, that seems to be the problem more than anything that the recycling centres can do. I mean, I have to praise them, their service is superb, and it's nice to have that opportunity to say so here. But what can they do? I know that there is a move to actually take some things out and to sell them on, but the quantity is much higher. You go and stand there, it's shocking, the stuff that goes in the skip. So what can they do to persuade residents? Thank you.
Thank you. I think Andy's going to pick this up.
Yeah. Thank you councillor Brockway for the compliments in terms of how the service is provided. Obviously, the intention is to try and make it a satisfactory experience for residents at all of the household waste recycling centres. In terms of the reuse, if you look on page 99, I think, is in the report, remind you of the waste hierarchy, and reuse should come above recycling. So as you're aware, we've introduced a trial at the Tattersall Household Waste Recycling Centre, which is going well, which is based on that principle of actually the goods that people bring that have an alternative use are taken out of the waste stream and then are available. We are now looking at actually how we roll that forward to all of the other recycling centres for that very reason. In addition, we've now got a paint reuse facility that was trialled initially, I think, at Grantham. It's either just started at Louth or is due to start at Louth. So again, it's recognising that there are certain goods. We all decorate a room and buy far too much paint and then end up leaving a half-used tin of paint in the shed for a period of time, take it to the recycling centres with a number of checks in terms of making sure it's fit for purpose. That will then be made available for people to come and collect and everything. So we are increasingly moving down that route of reuse rather than just pure recycling for the very reasons that you pointed out, is that the quality of some of the things that some people don't want to reuse is perfectly useful for other people.
Thank you. councillor Key, please.
Yeah, could I just add to that? I think it's a really good idea, this is, and it's something that perhaps we should have done right from the start, so it's brilliant. And I've seen the pictures of the Tattersall one. I've not actually been, but I've seen it. The stuff that's in there is amazing that is being sold. I just wondered, because have we thought about working with any of the charities to see if they would come and collect it in bulk for their charity shops? Because some of this stuff, as Jackie said, would be perfectly good enough for them to sell and then keep the money themselves, because obviously, there's going to be so much by the sound of it. Even if we had a shed full of it, it still wouldn't sort of shift it all on. So maybe a bulk policy of getting rid of some of this for resale, because obviously, reuse is at the top of the recycling agenda. Thank you.
We're using the experiences at Tattersall to inform the strategy of actually bringing it forward in other sites, and therefore, if it's more appropriate to look at, as you say, bulking up certain types of goods and taking them forward in a different way, that will be explored. As I say, it's based on experience that we've observed and evidence of how other authorities are doing it. We're trying to make sure that it's fit for purpose for Lincolnshire residents, and as you sort of indicate, for Lincolnshire charities as well. We have had in the past arrangements with certain type of goods that have gone back to charities. I think Salvation Army have worked with us previously on certain matters. So again, we're always exploring that, because again, it goes back to that waste hierarchy of reuse of goods rather than recycling or disposal is much more preferable, and that will then have a positive impact on our overall performance targets.
Thank you. councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, chairman. Just before I ask my question, which is on a different matter, it relates to the questions that have been asked loosely, and I've said this before, and I still believe this now, part of the issue, not in terms of reuse being the, you know, the primary in terms of the waste hierarchy, but the waste hierarchy is older than me, chairman, and I'm 30. So if you go down the waste hierarchy, it says that energy from waste is lower than recycling. And if you actually think and sit and think for a moment, to recycle something, you have to expand energy or use energy to create it into something else. Whereas if you stick it in the energy from waste plant and it generates energy, you're not using any energy. So surely, actually, when it can't be made into anything else, it's a reasonable amount of energy expended, surely it's far better to go, well, put it in the energy from waste plant, because then it's generating energy, it's using that facility and it's powering that facility. And if we had enough infrastructure or government invested in the infrastructure, we could actually start to power more things from waste. But the problem is the hierarchy doesn't allow us to do that, because it says you must recycle above using energy from waste services. And I think that is something that's needed or needs to be looked at, because energy from waste has been around for quite a number of years. It's not a new thing. I can remember when it was built here, but it's not a new, the principle of it is not a new thing, it's been around for a long time. My question, chairman, is could officers confirm days lost to sickness per FTE since LFR have submitted their information, because it wasn't in the original report? And what mitigation measures are employed in three highest areas, service areas, that is, chairman, for lost days of sickness? Thank you.
In terms of the, having the LFR data, and I'll get back to you with the updated figures. So in terms of days lost to sickness absence across those three high areas, Andrew may want to come in shortly, but those are discussed at directorate leadership team meetings every month. There's a discussion around HR data. That data is also provided on a monthly basis, not just a quarterly basis, to individual directorate leadership teams. And obviously, we do have obviously a sickness absence procedure that obviously is followed within each of those areas. We do know, obviously, we've had the winter period at the back end of December where we did see a lot more of the kind of cold coughs and a sickness, you know, bug, that obviously will have impacted on some of those areas. But I don't know if particular directors want to comment. Thank you.
Martin.
Yeah, if I can pick up one of those, because one of those examples is in adult social care, we are the second highest. We've recently done some analysis which identified that we have a particularly high level of sickness in one of my divisions. When we've looked at that division, that division also has the highest average age, so more than half of the staff in that division are over the age of 50. And so we've seen quite a lot of correlation between simply, you know, none of us are as young as we used to be, and that has some consequences. So we're doing some work to look at, are there things that, essentially looking at an older workforce than perhaps we are used to having? What are the things that we can do both to ensure that the work is appropriate for people who are, you know, not in the first flush of youth anymore, and to take account of that? But also that occasionally there are members of staff who have reached a stage where their physical wellbeing isn't consistent with them being able to do the work and ensuring that they can have a proper and supported flight path moving on rather than struggling. So we are taking very active steps, and it's just an example, I'm sure other divisions will be doing much the same.
Thank you. I understand Heather wants to come in on this as well, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. So, yeah, I mean, there's some similarities to what Martin was just saying. I think one of the areas we've got a particularly high level of days lost is within our health visiting team, and when we've looked into that in detail, that's planned operations. And again, there are an older workforce to the rest of our profile, and so there are some planned operations that some of that mostly female workforce are having. But we But we do watch this data really carefully. I think one of the challenges for frontline staff, particularly those, for example, who are going in to save very young babies is it's much harder to work on that if you've actually got, for example, you know, a really heavy cold, there's considerations when you're frontline with the public that need to be made about whether you can actually be going into people's homes. And some of those people are vulnerable themselves with health issues. So I think we often see slightly higher levels of sickness. But I do know that our levels of sickness are improving. And I think, and Caroline, correct me if I'm wrong, we're back to almost pre-pandemic levels. So we're seeing a general improvement with that. But also where that sickness is considered to be avoidable, we are using the HR processes to address that.
Thank you for those answers. Councillor Dilks, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank councillor Brockway for raising the really important issue, I think. You know, and Andy for telling us what you're doing, you know, to sort of at least start with a pilot project to see if we can't get around this. I'm, I'm quite passionate about reusing things. I've got to say, I'm chairman of my local age concern and quite frequently get asked by residents, what do I do with, you know, I've got a shed full of stuff to. And so I sometimes end up, you know, putting it in my car and taking it to the recycle. But I've got to tell you, sometimes some of it never makes it that far. And it gets redistributed to other people who might be able to use it and make good use of it. But once it gets to the recycling centre, I'd fully endorse what councillor Brockway said about, you know, the excellent help and everything that you get. But there are quite severe notices in my one at Bourne that says, you know, you might, you know, anything that arrives here has to sort of stay here really, and nobody should take anything away from the recycling centre, which does seem a bit perverse to me really. I've got to say, I'm somebody who has a, I've actually built a ramshackle greenhouse in my back garden from discarded windows and second-hand, you know, double glazing units that have been chucked away really. So I really welcome, you know, and hope that the rollout across all our centres that you're talking about, Andy, you know, happens very quickly. I know there's a lot of issues around it, you know. You can't expect, you know, people who sort of turn up and see something else. I understand the issues around that. But I really welcome them being looked at and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Key first.
Yes, I'm going to ask you about something else. But just back to that point, I do wonder perhaps whether to be, to be selling it at the recycling centre is actually the right place. Because most people who go to the recycling centre go to get rid of stuff and not to go home with a car full of more stuff. So it might be better to look at having it where people can just go and buy it, basically. Because I know I'm a hoarder, so I can't really comment. Anyway, back to, back to my question. And this is a question on the NEETS, which I think is a really weird abbreviation because it's not, it's far from NEET. This is the people, the young people who are not in education, employment or training. And obviously, we've got a green tick there. This was on the radio this morning. There was an article about this. And it is a real problem, particularly with mental health issues. And I wondered what more we can do with that. And do we actually count the 18-year-olds in a separate measure? I couldn't remember because the people that were interviewed this morning, some of them were even graduates that were still not in employment, education or training. So I think it is a big issue and it looks like we're achieving it. But there's still several hundred, you know, in our county of young people who are just drifting perhaps because they're not really fitting into anything else. And it's obviously, I think, a serious matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Does Heather want to pick that up for us, please?
Hi there. Sorry, sorry. I'm having, I'm having a little bit of problems with my connection. Could we just repeat the end of that question? Sorry, councillor.
Yes, certainly, Heather. I was just saying that do we measure the 18-year-olds? Because this is a measure for 16 to 17. And although we've got a green tick, which seems as if we're doing everything right, there's still quite a few hundred of these people who you could say are almost drifting in nowhere because they're not in any of those things. And there's all this potential that we could be missing. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks ever so much. So that, that would be covered within the adult employment and education rates, not within the children. Because once they turn 18, they're classified as being adults. So we do have measures around that. And we've got some measures within this report about the qualifications. But actually, as they move into that adult world, it's, it's less available for us to track in terms of what our statutory duties are. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillor Carrington, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I didn't want us to move off this particular item on the agenda without just touching on some of the elements. Caroline, I talked about to do with economic development. Because it is easier overlooked when we talk about the usual things county councillors get asked about, which tend to be roads and education provision, which we've already discussed. But I was really pleased to see in the report before us that we are encouraging economic development across such a broad range of fronts. We have buildings that we provide, not in competition with the market, but to supplement it. We heard from Caroline in her report, an allusion to the work that we do on tourism. We have some tremendous achievements, I think, going back to councillor Key's question just now, in terms of training and skills. And then, of course, as we heard on my committee at its last meeting, we have advice to businesses. And there has been an absolute peak recently in businesses seeking advice. And I think there is a great potential for local government to help generate and develop the prosperity of its district through working with the private sector. We've got so many examples of that in the report and I wanted those simply to be noted.
Thank you for that. Councillor Carrington, do we have any further comments or questions? No, I can't see any hands. So I will move that the board supports the recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 77 of the report. And I ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny office, be shared with the executive for its consideration. Do I have a second, please, councillor Carrington? All those in favour, please. That is clearly carried. Thank you. So we'll now move on swiftly to item 10, which is the Treasury Management Performance 2425, quarter three to the 31st of December 2024. This scrutiny report can be found on pages 131 to 168 of the Agenda pack. And this report presents an overview of performance against the corporate plan as of the 31st of December. The executive is due to consider the report for noting at its meeting on the 4th of March 2025. And our action is that we review the report and pass any comments on to the executive council for resources, communications and commissioning. And this report will be presented by Karen Tong, Treasury Manager. So over to you, Karen, please.
Thank you, chairman. I'll be brief on this report because I've got with me today Robert Baxter. He's from our Treasury advisors, who is our new advisor. So he'll be commenting on this report and the next one. So the report follows the usual format of interest rates, the economy, investments and borrowing. Turning to the economy, the main events affecting the economic outlook this quarter were the budget on the 30th of October, which was viewed to be inflationary from the markets. The US presidential election results and the threat of tariffs and that impact that's having from that quarter. And the base rate was cut in November to 4.75%. Interest rates are both long and short are on a downward trajectory. But it very much depends on the inflation impact as to the timing of those cuts. Base rate was actually cut in, on February, 6th of February to 4.5%, as expected, as forecast. Long-term rates soared after the budget because of the inflationary impact. And the forecast by our advisors went up by about 70, 0.7% because of this. And they're still remaining quite high. However, they're both still expected to fall throughout the year. The next expected cut of base rate is in May and then probably not till the end of 2025, whilst inflation is peaking again. The growth forecast halved by the Bank of England Monetary Policy Committee in February to 0.75% for this year. But they did increase the prospect for the following year slightly to one and a half percent. So they've still, still got this battle between controlling inflation and trying to boost growth, which is, this is tricky, tricky path to follow. Investments at 31st of December were 257.6 million. And our weighted average maturity fell to 82 days as liquidity, as we get to the end of the year, is tightening. Rates have fallen, the return has fallen slightly due to the fall in rates. But benchmarks are still being outperformed comfortably. We're taking advantage of higher rates offered by other councils for lending at the moment, as they struggle with their liquidity too. There's been a few lending list changes in the quarter. Main, main two really are the NatWest group, who we have always considered as part nationalised for, well, since the credit crunch really. And the government has been slowly selling off their share in this group. And so we have taken that part nationalised status away now. And they reverted back to, to credit limits based on their own credit criteria. The other one to mention is France, the French sovereign rating fell during the quarter due to the outlook of weak finances and political fragmentation. And so that's consequently all French banks' credit ratings have fallen in accordance with that. This has affected one of our counterparties, CIC. I won't say what the French is, my French isn't very good. We have a 20 million exposure to them at the moment and their limits have fell to, fallen to 20 million six months limit. So we're still within that, that new credit limit. And they're due to mature by May. So there's no concern, but just point out the changes. Moving on to borrowing, borrowing requirements now just above 70 million of 2425. All of this borrowing requirement is going to be internal borrowing with no external borrowing required, as in accordance with the debt liability benchmark results. So any detail, the detail of the investment, sorry, you can see on appendix B on page 147 of your pack, which gives you, you know, more detail on that. And the detail on the borrowing is appendix F on page 167. And just finally, I'd like to, I'd mention that Link, our Treasury advisors, have had a name change in that quarter. They're now called MUFG Corporate Markets, which I've got to get used to saying. And we have been, a new contract has been awarded for the Treasury advisory service for, from the 1st of April to MUFG. And this is a three-year plus two-year extension contract going forward. So that's all I've got to say. I just wonder if Robert could just comment on that before we take any questions. Thanks.
Morning, everybody. Nice to meet you all. Just to give you a bit of context of who I am. So I work for MUFG, as we're now called. But I used to work for City of Lincoln Council for 14 years, just across the road, as Chief Financial Officer, latterly before I left. Been in local government now for 17 years in total, so very much sort of born and bred local government person, even though I worked for a London-based company. I actually live in Saltfleet on the East Coast, so very much a local person. Just in terms of the report, the quarterly report, so no external borrowing was taken in the quarter and indeed, nothing is due to be taken in 2425. This ties in with Karen said, the liability benchmark indicates. Also is consistent with the fact that rates at the minute are too high, obviously to consider borrowing. Any maturing debt was repaid. The investment return was very good at 5.37%. And this outperformed both the Sonya benchmark by 0.47% and the local authorities benchmarking group as well. So very good performance. I think overall on the report itself, I think you can see it is very good performance for the quarter. Certainly, compared to peers and other county councils, et cetera, doing very, very well. So, you know, well done.
Thank you for that. Do we have any questions? Councillor Smith, and I've got a few.
Thank you. And apologies to you both because it's probably a bit of a crystal ball question, but it is important. Given the fact, as it's already been announced in the media, that there is not enough skilled labour in the construction industry, is it fair to say, given the problems alluded to in the report around the government's budget, that these problems are already coming home to roost? And what are the risks financially for LCC in terms of capital projects? Because obviously, construction material comes down at a far slower rate from inflation than most other things do. Where have I gone to? With inflation already being at 3%, do you think that it's likely that interest rates will continue to be cut? Because inflation seems to only be going one way at the minute and that's up. Or will it be more likely that caution will prevail and they'll either stay as the same? Or are we at risk potentially of an interest rate rise? And if we do have a rise, what would be the real world impact in terms of us as a county council for our finances and capital programming if there was an interest rate rise? Thank you.
I'll let Michelle answer regarding the capital programme, if I may, and I'll comment on the interest.
So our capital programme is reviewed regularly, as we've kind of mentioned. And specific schemes are let through our contractual routes. So fluctuating prices at that point are built into the contracted provisions that are agreed through those routes. And each scheme will have contingencies to deal with that. I think what we, what the challenge is, is some of the year-on-year increases in costs, such as the national insurance and national living wage that then gets reflected into our contract prices and what we're able to do each year on things like the highways asset protection budgets. Clearly, we build in separately to that our capital financing costs as part of our revenue budget setting. And the challenges that you're talking about with the interest rates and the cost of borrowing are very much reflected in the prudency that we're showing in growing our capital programme. And clearly, the budget that was agreed last week by council had an additional 20 million in for economic schemes. But apart from that, we've got obviously some quite serious major schemes in there. We've kind of been quite careful about in growing that programme to reflect the revenue impact of any capital financing costs.
Thanks. And regarding interest rates, I think Robert may be able to help me out here. But the, the inflation is peaking again at the moment. And I think it went up 33% in the last, last call. And I think that was predominantly due to airfares and food and energy and that sort of stuff. It is a tricky path, isn't it, to try and control inflation while still try and promote growth? The Bank of England just look at wage growth as well, which is increasing. But they're still on a downward trajectory of forecast. But it is very much dependent on whether they can keep that inflation figure under control. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Robert, from your interview.
Just in terms of inflation in general, really, I mean, I think one of the largest elements of it is wage growth. So if wage growth goes up, obviously that becomes what we call sticky inflation. So it becomes baked into the figures. So every price of services, goods, et cetera, will go up by a comparative amount. And that's the hardest bit to come down in the economy because everything goes up in general. So I think the Bank of England will be looking at the wage growth as one of their key things really. And as long as wage growth's coming down, they'll feel confident, I think, to be able to cut the base rate accordingly. Karen mentioned that the trajectory is for the base rate to be cut. Obviously, we've been sort of talking about this for a couple of years now, but things have come out to sort of derail planning. have come out to sort of derail plans to some extent, but I think the downward trajectory is still very much, you know, the way forward, really. I think in terms of inflation in the UK, it's gone up from two point five to three per cent. It's due to go up again, just about three and a half per cent, before then starting to come down again this year, and then back below two per cent around mid next year. Now, that's in the forecast, that's where most economic commentators believe it's going to be anyway at the moment. So if it does go up, you know, soon, it's almost like expected to go up, if we know to mean. The only change will be is if it goes up higher than what perhaps was expected, and it stays around a little bit longer, which could potentially have an impact in terms of base rates, et cetera.
Thank you for that. Well, actually, wage growth is quite an interesting measure, because with what was in the budget with the national insurance rise, the wage growth as well, that extra tax put on, you will expect goods and services to increase even further, which will fire up the inflation, which will mean there will be no interest rate cuts, and that's, I think, we've got to be realistic with that. Do we have any further questions? Councillor Key, please.
Yes, mine's not a question, it's maybe a suggestion for the next council. I've only been on this committee for twelve months when I became chairman of a scrutiny committee, but I do struggle with these reports, not because they're not right or anything like that, it's just that I'm not an accountant. I've been self-employed and in business all my working life, but I still struggle with them. So I was going to suggest, perhaps, and maybe you do this at the beginning of the term, but maybe there's extra training for the people who scrutinise these reports, because unlike you, chairman, I'm not an accountant, but I do consider myself quite financially aware, and I still struggle. So just a suggestion, really. Thank you.
Karen, you ought to come in.
Yes, you'll be pleased to know. I'll be dealing with this in the next paper, but there is a knowledge and skills framework being established for all those involved in this area, Treasury members and officers alike, and that's been established and will be progressed in twenty twenty five in the future. So yes, watch your space. If you are, you know, on this committee, then you will be invited for any training and of any knowledge and skills gaps that you may have.
Thank you. Sadly, Karen, I won't be here, but I'm sure it'll be very useful for those that are. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Councillor Marple, please.
Yes, just following on from what Andrew said, really, is that it's not only, is it sort of quite a tricky one to follow, but it's also not exactly very frequent, so that causes an extra headache. So when it only comes up every period, you're sort of then thinking back three months ago what you've just learned, and you've forgotten that anyway. So it's, in some sense, I half wonder whether it's the right committee. I know it comes here and it's perhaps right to come here, but it's how do we keep engaged in something that only comes up every three months and is quite complicated when it does come up? I can learn most things and stick with it when I'm doing it all the time, but on Treasury it is a challenge, and I think it's just because I'm not in it all day long, that's the problem.
Yeah, the... I was just going to say that the quarterly updates, we follow the SIF code for reporting requirements, and that's why it's quarterly. We have quarterly updates, an annual report for the end of the financial year, and a strategy for the beginning of the next one. So that's our minimum reporting requirements. But yes, I take your point, and hopefully, with the new knowledge and skills framework, members will be, you know, more engaged and can satisfy their, any knowledge and skills gaps that, you know, can be highlighted. And I'll take recommendations to, you know, aid your knowledge, you know, by whatever means.
Thank you for that. Any further questions from the committee? I've got two questions. So you mentioned the French banks have been downgraded. I'm assuming that the money that we've got invested will be moved on maturity, or are we keeping them within the French banks? And my second question relates to the twelve councils that we've invested in on the current investment list on page one five six. I'm assuming none of those, and I know the interest rates are extremely good, and I wish I could get that from my savings account, however, we can't, I'm assuming none of those are near section one one four notices. Thank you.
Yeah, the French banks have been downgraded, and that's reflected in the limits that we have for them. So their limits, I think we've only got a couple of French banks on the lending list, and the limits have fallen from twenty five million to twenty, and from one year to six months, and that reflects their credit limits that they've got under the credit criteria that we follow from M U F G. So they'll still be on our lending list, and when they've matured with the existing bank, it just depends on, you know, what investments are available, you know, at that time to replace them with. But we're not going to restrict lending to the French banks, we've just recognised the deterioration in their credit quality slightly by the limits, so that's no concern. And the, yes, none of the local authorities that we've lent money to are under section one one four at the moment. We do, although the credit limit and criteria of local authorities is A one, you know, there's no credit issue at all with the councils, I do do a check to make sure that, you know, any that come up aren't struggling financially, aren't having section one one fours, and I try and keep a close eye on it before we, you know, take that decision.
That's great, thank you. Andrew, you ought to come in, please.
Just to add a massive emphasis, chairman, please, if that's right, yeah, so we do keep a running check of when we are putting the money out, but I think, just to re-emphasise what Karen was saying, even if we did have some money with a council that went into a section one one four notice territory, it would be classed as a contractual payment that they owe us money to, which isn't prohibited under a notice. So whilst that council was working its way through in terms of understanding how it can get itself back into a sustainable position, again, whether that's through acceptable financial support from the government or spending cuts, they would be obliged to pay any money owing to us from an interest perspective, but we've clearly not been in that situation.
That's great, thank you. Do any further questions? No, so I will move that the board endorsed the report, and ask that our comments, as captured, be escalated to the relevant officers and shared with the executive councillor for resources, communications and commissioning. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Smith, all those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you. So we'll now move on to item eleven, which is the Treasury Management Strategy Statement, an annual investment strategy for Treasury Investments twenty five, twenty six. This scrutiny report can be found on pages one hundred and sixty nine to two hundred and eighteen of the agenda pack, and this report presents an overview of performance against corporate plan. The executive is due to consider a report for noting at its meeting on the fourth of March, so our action is that we review and pass any comments on to the executive councillor for resources, communications and commissioning, and this report, again, will be presented by Karen Tong. Karen, please.
Yes, thank you, chairman. This is the strategy that actually sets our rules and expectations for the forthcoming year, twenty five, twenty six. I'll just highlight the main highlights from the strategy, as time is brief. As I've mentioned, alluded to just shortly ago, a knowledge and skills framework for Treasury management has been produced in twenty twenty, twenty four, and this has highlighted all those that are involved in the area, Treasury Management area, and highlighted what knowledge and skills it would be expected those people to have based on their role. So that's been done, and in the following year, we're going to sort of find out the knowledge and skills gaps from everyone based on that expectation, and develop a training programme. And this training programme will be monitored on an ongoing basis and adapted to suit whatever, you know, needs arise and training requirements arise from that. So hopefully, members will have the opportunity to be trained a bit on the areas they don't feel comfortable with. The other area is the long-term and short-term rates forecast. As we've mentioned before, the forecast is to fall over the year, and the short-term rates are expected to end this year at three point seven five per cent. Again, risk is on the upside to this forecast, and it all depends on inflation and world events, and the growth prospects are subdued for the economy. The debt liability benchmark for twenty five, twenty six does indicate at this point in time that we'll need to borrow thirty six million external borrowing to maintain sufficient liquidity, and that's from a borrowing requirement of just under seventy million. So because of the interest rate path, forecast path, any borrowing externally will be undertaken at the end of the financial year to take advantage of the falling rates. Cash balances available for strategic investment, investment are due to fall over the year as the debt liability benchmark is followed and investment liquidity levels are reached. There's been a change to the M R P policy, this is appendix to the report, appendix C, I believe, on the report. There's been a change to that this year, and we've moved to a method of calculation called the annuity method for all debt pre two thousand and eight, which is called supported debt, and the unsupported debt was moved to that annuity method in twenty four, twenty five. This move, this option of calculation is a chosen option within the statutory guidance, and it was also recommended by M U F G as our advisers to go to, and the main reason really is that the method re-profils M R P repayment whereby it's greater at the end of the asset life of the borrowing rather than at the beginning. And the justification for this is it is because it links the M R P charge to the flow of benefits of those assets, which are deemed higher in the later years of an asset. Maintenance costs are higher in later years of that asset as well, so it aligns it to that, and also a later M R P is also diminished by the net present value factor. So for those reasons, we've re-profiled that, which has added the effect of reducing the M R P in the early years but increasing it in the later years of the profile. Another change to point out this year is the authorised limit for borrowing, including other long-term liabilities, which are finance leases, has increased by fifty million this year to adjust for the impact of a reporting standard, F R S sixteen, which converts operating leases held by the authority to finance leases, which then become on our balance sheet and are akin to debt, so we have to include them in any limits for debt. So prudential indicators on Appendix B on page two oh three of your pack have been set for the year ahead, and the investment and borrowing strategies have been set accordingly based in line with the both factors I've mentioned. The strategies can be seen on the pack, the investment one is detailed in page one nine five, and the borrowing strategy is page one nine two, and these are constantly reviewed throughout the year as well to cope with any changes. So again, that's all I'll say, and I'll just ask Robert to comment on that strategy. Thank you.
Hello again. I think it's worthwhile just sort of starting with a summary of interest rates and where they've been and where they're going. So obviously, when the T M S S was pulled together, rates were four point seven five per cent in terms of base rate, and they've already fallen to four and a half per cent earlier this month, and by the end of this year, we should be between three point seven five and four per cent, and then on to about three and a half per cent in twenty five or twenty six. The council's maintained an internal borrowing position, as Karen said, and that internal borrowing position's about thirty per cent at the moment, and that is pretty much in line with the average across our client base at the moment, so very much the norm at the moment with interest rates where they are. The council may need to borrow around thirty five point nine million in this or next financial year, twenty five, twenty six, but that will be in the latter half of the financial year, when hopefully rates will have come down to more acceptable levels to be able to do that. Investment balances are going to average around two hundred million during twenty five, twenty six, with core balances of around a hundred million, and the core balances will be invested between three months and two years to get the best possible return. And then finally, the council follow our own credit methodology, but they also put more stringent overlay, which means that you use more non-UK banks of higher quality, of higher suggested duration as well, and that policy has served you well, and that's certainly consistent with the policy which is in the current T M S S as well. So just generally, very good policy, good strategy, you know, fit for purpose and makes sense moving forward.
That's great, thank you. Do we have any questions on this report? Councillor Smith, please.
Thank you, chairman. Given the one point one differential in investment and borrowing rates, what can be done for the council to mitigate these risks?
Yeah, like I say, there is a cost of carry because of the differential between the rates, and that's why, you know, we wouldn't be borrowing until we needed to. We are sort of leaving the borrowing till the end of the financial year to see if rates do fall. That's all we can do, really, in terms of mitigating the risk. If rates don't come down as expected, then we do, you know, that is a benefit on the investment side, so there's always the trade-off there, because they'll maintain their higher level. But yes, the cost of carry is always a factor, and we minimise the borrowing as much as we can. And in fact, we have a borrowing requirement at this point in time through the debt liability benchmark, but that is constantly reviewed as well due to slippage and factors that are brought in throughout the year. So as in previous years, that might end up with no borrowing requirement at the end of the day, and to maintain internal borrowing if that's the case. So it is constantly reviewed, so we wouldn't be borrowing if we didn't have to, basically.
Thank you for that. Do we have any further comments or questions? No, I think it's a very sensible strategy for the forthcoming year, so I will move that the board endorsed the report and ask that our comment, as mentioned by councillor Smith, is captured and cascaded to relevant officers and shared with the executive councillor for resources, communications and commissioner. Do I have a second, please? Councillor Smith, all those in favour? Please, that's unanimous, thank you. So we'll now move on to item twelve. Thank you for your attendance. Item twelve, which is the scrutiny committee work programmes, and the next report can be found on between pages two hundred and nineteen and two hundred and thirty two of the agenda pack. And this report sets out the work programmes of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee and the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee in accordance with the board's agreed programme. So our action is that we report invites us to review and comment on its content and record our satisfaction with the activity undertaken, and endorse the planned activity for the rest of this term and potentially beyond to twenty five, twenty six. And this report will be presented in two parts. The Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee will be presented by the chairman, councillor Ian Carrington, and the Highways and Transport Scrutiny Committee will be presented by myself. So we'll start with you, Ian, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chairman. Good morning again, colleagues. Chairman, since the committee's last report on the twenty eighth of November, the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee has met on one occasion, and we are due to meet again on the eleventh of March for what will be our last meeting for this council term. As you can see from the report included in your packs, at our last meeting, we looked at one of the most critical areas of scrutiny, the twenty five, twenty six revenue and ca... at one of the most critical areas of scrutiny, the 2526 revenue and capital budget proposals, where we examined cost pressures, inflationary impacts and funding challenges and we ensured that financial allocations reflected the need of our local economy, environmental services and infrastructure development and we received assurances that there are robust plans in place to tackle future adversity and safeguard this council's financial stability. Chairman, as we heard earlier in this meeting from councillor Key, we are by design and not by accident, very robust in our financial position. Many other councils are not and it is by good management and indeed contribution by powerful scrutiny that we remain in such good financial health. Chairman, at that meeting, we also took an opportunity to continue being proactive in shaping the future of our high streets, engaging in particular with the Federation of Small Businesses to understand evolving retail patterns and economic resilience strategies. And following a very comprehensive presentation and a thorough debate, we have recommended that a piece of work relevant to procurement requirements for small business be undertaken and presented to this board in line with the board's oversight of procurement activities. Further to that, we've asked the area manager of the Federation of Small Business to return to our committee at a later date in the next term with progress updates and we will be looking to maintain close collaboration and engagement to increase the visibility of our thriving small businesses and strengthen our partnership working. And chairman, I should say, beyond the work in the committee chamber, as its chairman and along with the portfolio holder councillor Davy, I do meet regularly with the local representative of the Federation of Small Business. And indeed, we had in this very chamber recently a special meeting where we were joined by the national chairman of the Federation and a whole number of small business representatives from across our county. And that was incredibly useful to get an insight into their needs, their concerns and for them to understand what assistance we could give. Chairman, we are local government and like local government and local business, we are all subject to the winds, whether they're warm ones or colder ones, which come from national government. But there is a huge amount we can do because we at local level can deal at a granular level with individual small businesses and I think the work that we have done in this past term has been very valuable. Chairman, the committee further reviewed the devolution white paper, which highlighted to us the structural transitions that will impact on economic governance and investment framework. Turning to environment matters, we have scrutinised a pre-decision report on the management and treatment of street cleansing residues with a focus ensuring that disposal methods employed and implemented remain sustainable, cost efficient and compliant to regulation. And I would just say on that, as with previous work we did on deliveries to the energy from waste plant, which as we heard earlier in the meeting, is so valuable in keeping down our landfill allocation, we did ensure that lorries, heavy lorry routings for those services would be confined to main roads and would avoid going through our villages. And I know that is a great concern to many of our rural residents and I'd also highlight the work that we have done in cooperation with the flood and water management committee. They were kind enough to invite me as a plus one to the flood impact inquiry, which that committee has just produced. And it is a good example of two scrutiny committees working very productively together to try and ensure new ways of working to reduce the risk of flood and harm from flooding to our residents and businesses. Chairman, looking forward to our final meeting for this term, our last agenda includes vital discussions on the future of fusion energy in Lincolnshire. We will look at coastal flood risk management in conjunction with our partners from the Environment Agency and will receive an update on the visitor economy, which carries a powerful message about the increasing prominence of our county as a travel destination and conveys opportunities for further economic development across the county. Finally, chairman, we are concluding this council term and I do want to take the opportunity in this chamber to reflect on the significant work undertaken by the environment and economy scrutiny committee. Over the past four years, we've engaged in rigorous discussions and provided strategic oversight on key issues affecting the economy and environment, such as utilities provision, waste transfer station improvements and the Greater Lincolnshire groundwater project, just to mention a few. We've also had two in-depth scrutiny reviews, which have looked at town centre improvements and the review of the agricultural sector supports and those will continue to report back to the committee in the next term. And for all the work that went into all of those and the rest of the work of the committee, I do want to record my gratitude to members, to officers, to stakeholders for their diligence, expertise and commitment to delivering meaningful scrutiny. The work of this committee has provided invaluable insight and I hope also robust challenge, ensuring that Lincolnshire's environment and economic future remains a key strategic priority. Chairman, that concludes my report to this committee, this board rather, but I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there any questions we will do at this point? No? No, thank you for that. councillor Carrington, so I'll now present on behalf of the chairman of the highways and transport scrutiny committee. So on behalf of the chairman, I am pleased to provide this reflection on the recent work of the highways and transport scrutiny committee as we approach the end of this council term. So over the past meetings, the committee has undertaken significant scrutiny of Lincolnshire's transport infrastructure and service delivery. In our most recent sessions, we reviewed key reports, including the parking enforcement strategy outside schools, which aim to improve compliance and safety through a combination of fixed and mobile CCTV and civil enforcement officers. We also examined the latest highways and transport performance reports, quarter two, where the members raised concerns about contractor performance, winter maintenance effectiveness and long term funding pressures. Additionally, we've scrutinised major works, projects, including the Grantham and North Hike and Relief Roads, ensuring that progress remained on track, which we've heard today on the Grantham one is slightly been delayed and that funding challenges are managed effectively. Looking ahead, the committee will continue its oversight of the Lincolnshire's Bus Service Improvement Plan, the BCP funding allocation, a crucial initiative to enhance bus services and maintain fair affordability and future discussions will also focus on transport strategy developments, major highway schemes and flooding resilience measures, ensuring that Lincolnshire remains well prepared for infrastructure challenges in the years to come. So on behalf of the chairman and members, I would like to extend my gratitude to the officers for their commitment to rigorous scrutiny and informed debate. Your dedication has been instrumental in ensuring that Lincolnshire's highways and transport services continue to serve residents effectively now and in the future. So thank you for that. So do you have any questions on the highways? councillor Dilks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Two points I've got to make. councillor County actually mentioned in his under the previous one about the traffic regulation orders, I think you were talking about. I appreciate it was environment and but it did remind me to sort of to welcome actually, to welcome the current consultation that the county is taking over measures to impose limits in heavy lorries travelling through one of my villages, Langtoft. Then mainly the problem is gravel, you know, lorries from gravel workings and there is a current consultation on preventing them going, you know, on certain roads through Langtoft and Baston, which is very welcomed locally. And as, you know, local campaigners have been going on about this, if I might put it that way, for some years and they feel that there should have been planning conditions when these gravel workings were. So I think that is something to bear in mind in the future, you know, when we get these. And my second point was on Grantham Relief Road, if I may, and noting what Andy, I think it was Mr Gutherson, mentioned, the recent delays that were announced and the increased costs of that project and the fact it's going to be delayed a year. I noticed there is a very comprehensive programme of agenda items to come before the highway scrutiny committee, but will they be? And I noticed they did consider it in the Grantham bypass, if I can call it that, Relief Road in December. I'm not sure if that was before or after that announcement, you know, of these latest delays. But my question really is, will they be? Is there any plan for the highway scrutiny committee to specifically look into those issues and see if any lessons might be learnt for the future? Thank you.
I'm going to pass this over to Cara.
Thank you very much. Certainly, this is something that can be introduced and incorporated in the work programme of highways and transport for the next council term. But certain elements will also be picked under the discussions that will take place incrementally, which emerge from the scrutiny review that took place in this past council term. Thank you.
councillor Hill, please.
Yes, thank you. I mean, I think it is obviously, there does need to be a scrutiny review of lessons learned of what's happened, why there's been the delay and all the rest of it. Just to summarise, obviously the county council, we don't employ bridge engineers because we don't build many bridges. So international external engineers were, design engineers were engaged. They came up with a plan and that was again verified by a third party, again, an internationally respected company. And then it turns out when we start working on the ground, twice now, that it was then decided that the original plan wasn't sufficient. So I think, and I think there does need to be scrutiny. All I would say is the priority at the moment is to get this bridge built and what I think highways wouldn't want to do, start engaging in quite a contentious discussion with the contractors and I think really the view should be that let's get this thing built and then look to see. And obviously there will be then issues about who pays for this extra cost because it was clearly we had no engagement, we had that, well, see, we relied on others to agree this plan. So I think it, in theory, it looks a pretty straightforward issue that it shouldn't be the county council which pays the extra money. But I think that is where we are. So hopefully the latest plan will work and certainly by the later on this year, there will be a bridge and then they'll be able to just do the design work. So yes, a scrutiny, but probably we need to just be a bit, a little bit patient before we rush in and actually make it likely that this bridge is delayed anymore.
Thank you for that.
councillor Key, please.
Yes, not a question, just a comment. And obviously I'm coming to the end of my term and I'm not standing at the election. But I'm certain that my experience is that the vast majority of my residents think that the county council only do highways because all my queries are about highways and I've got to know quite a bit about it over the time. And really, it's just that comment and that the importance of this highways scrutiny is so important. Relatively, it's quite a small amount of our overall budget because most goes to other things, but this does affect the vast majority of people in the county. So really just to reinforce the work of this committee because it means so much to so many. Thank you.
Thank you for that. councillor Kendrick, please.
Thank you chairman. I was particularly interested to see the comments in the report of your meeting on the 9th of December about parking enforcement outside schools. That's been an issue within my division and I'm pleased to see the recommendations were supported. And also the positive report on Fix My Street, something that I keep plugging away within my division because it always seems to be people thinking, oh, somebody must have reported that pottle, but when you check on Fix My Street, they haven't reported it. So I keep encouraging people in parish councils and the public in my area to use it and I'm pleased to see there's been a positive report on that in your report. Thank you chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, Fix My Street is a vital tool now that we use as a county council. I mean, I used it yesterday when I was out campaigning. So yeah, it's a very important tool. councillor Dilks.
Yeah, thanks Alan. Just to say, I fully support that. I mean, Fix My Street a few years ago was, you know, it wasn't ideal. It's obviously taken a long time to get up to speed, if I could call it that, but it does work now and I'd recommend anyone to use it. Quite often you do, as councillor Kendrick says, you know, people will say, oh, I've reported. Yeah, they might have put it on Facebook or something, but you know, Fix My Street is the tool and what it does, it creates a sort of a log of when it was reported and when it gets sorted. So it is a very good tool. At South Castleford, we're actually looking to see if we can widen the scope of Fix My Street into other areas, so not just street problems, but thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? No, so I would like to thank the presenters for their reports and move that the board's satisfaction of the work undertaken be recorded and the board endorsed the work programmes as have been developed to date. All those in favour, please? Thank you, unanimous. So we'll now move on to item 13, which is the people management update, quarter three, and this report is on pages 233 to 242 of the pack. Any questions or clarifications can be communicated offline to our scrutiny officer and these will be picked up following today's meeting. Our action is to note the contents of its report, so I therefore move that the report be noted. Can you please raise your hand if you agree? Thank you, that is unanimous. So we'll now move on to item 14, which is the overview and scrutiny management board work programme. And the last report in our packs is on pages 243 to 252 and provides an overview of the contents of our own work programme. So our action is to note the contents. Our next meeting is on the 17th of March, which is a Monday, so put that in your diary. It's not a Thursday, it's a Monday. And we will be having just one item on that agenda. I've taken the decision today to move the update on the IMT services and the overview and scrutiny work programmes to the next meeting. So the only item for discussion at that meeting will be local government reorganisation, which we are pre-decision scrutiny being made at that meeting. So with that in mind, I will move that the report be noted and all those in favour, please? Thank you, that is unanimous. So I will conclude today's meeting. Thank you.